We've got everybody, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you all for joining. Mike, thank you for making time for us this evening. I don't think we've got any other folks. See Chris Cutter turn in, so I'll ask Chris, if there's anything you want to add as a member of the public to weigh in here. Feel free to, otherwise just enjoy the show. So our first item on the agenda is our annual Freedom of Access Act training, which is why Mike's here with us tonight. So every year we have to, as part of our town council rules and code of conduct and all that kind of stuff, go through an annual refresher on this. Particularly relevant and beneficial for the two new counselors, but something that all of us should be, you know, well aware of and putting into practice on a regular basis. So Deb is our Freedom of Access liaison. Is that right titled, Deb, or coordinator or main point of contact, I guess? So any, any request officer? Yeah, okay. So any, any requests that do come in funnel through her. So I'm sure we'll go through that in detail, but Deb is a wealth of knowledge on this as well from having handled this responsibility for a number of years now, as well as been involved in many regional and state level trainings and workshops and things like that to stay on top of the latest and greatest in this area. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to both Mike and Deb to run this part of our agenda. Please feel free to ask questions and participate as they go through the stuff.
Deb, do you want me to lead off?
Yeah, Mike, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, we circulated our memo, which really didn't change much from last year. I'm going to start at the end of the memo because that's where it talks about COVID-19 and which allows this workshop to be done remotely is a combination of state statute and the governor's executive order declaring a state of emergency. So we're authorized to have virtual meetings because of the declared state of emergency. Once the state of emergency is, has expired, that section is automatically repealed and we will go back to in-person meetings. And who knows whether the legislature is going to take up something to make this more, you know, of an option going forward. It's certainly helpful. You know, if we, if this were snowing really hard tonight, we might opt out of an in-person meeting and have a virtual meeting. But we'll see what happens after this is over. But it certainly has made it convenient for me if I have a meeting in another town that's hours away. I don't have to drive home late at night, so I kind of like them.
Mike and Deb and Matt, just on that point, are you guys, you know, hearing anything? I know it's not a front burner issue from the standpoint of, you know, dealing with more pressing matters relating to the current, you know, state of emergency, but are you hearing anybody raising that as a, as a, you know, likely path that we might go down in some form or another?
That's a great question, Jamie. Thank you. Yesterday on my Southern Maine managers meeting, Kate Dufour and Steve Gover there from MMA, and I believe they'll be bringing a bill forward in this, or at least there will be at least one, if not multiple bills, being brought forward to have this as, as an option going forward in the future. So they'll be, they are pursuing that as a legislative approach. They're also looking to get the governor to make sure she submits another executive order close to the end of the year because that, her current order expires, I think, the 27th of December. So we're waiting to have that from Governor Mills as well. So in the short term, we're looking at expansion, but I think in the long term, they're looking to have this as a permanent option because I think across the state, they found that people have had a higher level of participation from the public and the ability to tune in and not having the obstacle of having to physically go to, go to a building to see what their public officials are doing. So I think it's been fairly warmly embraced as long as people have been successfully getting it out there where folks can all have access.
Okay, thanks.
I talked to JP Cog last week and they were also working in the region to have something together to show support for remote meetings continuing in some form or fashion.
Great. Well, so I want to talk a little bit about, you know, public proceedings and public records and Deb can, Debbie can jump in at any time on, on either, either point. She, she should be the one that's delivering this because she knows so much about it. But all of the same requirements for public notice and public participation apply to any virtual meeting as well as they would have for an in-person meeting. So you have to keep that in mind. I don't really want to read through the memo, but I would like and would really encourage questions, but so feel free to interrupt at any time if you have any questions. I would also, I guess, reference you to the Code of Ethics for the Town Council. I'm sure you've read that already, but one of the things we're going to be talking about is email communications and how those are public records and available to be reviewed upon request. So you're supposed to keep record copies of any emails electronically through the town on anything that has to do with public business. And those, those emails are discoverable, if you will. So you want to make sure you don't put anything in an email that you wouldn't want to see in the Cape Courier, basically. So we recently had a case in another town and got a hold of emails from a code enforcement officer. It had to do with a zoning board issue and stuff. And some of the emails were really critical, I mean, like smoking guns, that he was saying how he felt like he had made a mistake, that the other side had really good points on X, Y, and Z. And so it's just, it was, you know, just a reminder that those things are available for inspection by the public. Talk a little bit about public proceedings. So this, you know, the council is a body that has more than three members. So any, anytime there's a meeting, even if there's just two people meeting of the, of the council, it has to be noticed and people have the, have to have the opportunity to observe what's going on. And so just want to remember that, that if you're, if you happen to run into each other and you're talking about something that's before the council, that's really, you shouldn't be. And, and if you, if you find yourself having gotten into that situation, then at the next meeting, you should disclose that and that you talked about it, but no decisions were made, that type of thing. So that it, I mean, the main purpose of all of this is that the legislature and the courts want the public's business done in public and do not want, you know, clandestine meetings, secretive meetings where things get discussed that are before the council. So, I mean, it's okay to talk about when the next meeting is or that kind of thing. But no, no pending matters, no public business. So, you know, I don't know if there are any questions on, on that aspect of, of having everything be out in the open and that public policy behind that.
Go ahead.
I just have a quick question about the email. Should we keep, I mean, when Debbie sends an email saying what time you available for a meeting, can I delete that or should we just keep absolutely everything?
Well, I guess I would err on the side of keeping everything, but really some of the, if it's just availability for a meeting, it's hard to imagine that that's really going to be critical down the, down the line. Deb, do you have a comment on that?
I agree with you, Mike. I think that, you know, like you say, you err on the side of caution, but certainly setting up a meeting, you know, is within, you know, the rights of the council members to talk and, and for staff to talk with council as well. One thing that we've talked about over time, you know, particularly with emails is to maybe set up folders in your emails for council business or what have you. We all know that, you know, if and when we have to produce emails and so forth, it's like, you know, how do you go through? Where do we even start to find emails? And depending on the search engine that you have and so forth. So that might be a tip for people just to, you know, try to keep the folders. But certainly setting up a meeting, you know, doesn't necessarily have to be kept. You know, we talk about maybe getting in the habit of keeping everything just so you have it. And then you're safe, you know, no matter what. And I think just what I would like to mention too, Mike, is that everything that applies to the council applies to our boards and committees as well. So their meetings are public, their emails, text messages, the notes that you take, you might have a yellow pad of paper like I do. All those, they are public too. And again, this extends to our boards and committees as well because they represent the town in the business that they do on behalf of the town, so.
Yeah, and that's a great point, Deb, because, you know, when you, if you ever go into an executive session and you bring that yellow notepad and you take notes, those notes then become public records that would be discoverable. So we don't recommend taking any notes in executive session. And, and you're not allowed to take a vote during executive session. You can discuss, for example, rights and responsibilities of, of the council with, with the town attorney. But you can't make a decision. And then you go back out into public and then have a discussion and make that decision.
Deb, on the email, Matt, at least on mine, the way it's enabled, I don't think I can actually delete emails. It can, you can archive them, but at least when I'm using my iPad, it doesn't give me the option to delete them. You can move them to a folder, you can archive them. I don't think you can, I don't think it actually lets you delete them, so.
Yeah. And I guess what I would say about the emails is too, is a few years ago, the town asked of required council to have the capelizabeth.org email because that sets on our server as well. So that if we did get a FOIA request, you know, our technology department would be able to sift through the emails as well. So, and I know a lot of towns have gone to that. Some towns have even gone to the length of requiring boards and committee members to have their town emails, town or city emails, so that everything is archived as well. We haven't gone to that step at this point, you know, for various reasons, but certainly with councils, school boards, most likely will have town and city emails for that, for that reason.
You both were talking a minute ago about communication between counselors, you know, in-person meetings between counselors and things like that. Can you talk a little bit about communication with citizens and constituents and things like that?
Sure. If, if, if someone approaches you on a matter that is, is before the council and is trying to advocate for a position on something, then you really should try to shy away from those types of engagements and say, you know, we're going to be having a workshop or our next meeting is on such and such, we'll be taking up and please feel free to come and express your, your views at that point. Because everybody benefits when they have that type of exchange of ideas and thoughts. So if, if you do get approached by someone, our recommendation is to disclose that at the next meeting, what you talked about. It, to me, it seems like it happens more, you know, for the, for a zoning board of appeals, for example, when they've got a specific variance request in front of them and they get approached by the applicant and wants to talk to them and that they can't. That's a quasi judicial position that they're in and they cannot have that conversation. A counselor, you know, you're dealing with broader issues of public policy, usually not necessarily a particular decision on that, that's going to affect that particular person. And they may be expressing what their opinions are on a public policy issue. And that's part of your job as a, being on a legislative body like the town council is to hear from your constituents. So you want to engage with them and have their viewpoints. But if it, if it's something that is particular to them, really need to shy away from that kind of discussion and invite them to the next meeting where that matter might be taken up. Is that helpful?
It is. I think the other thing that we've encouraged everyone to do, and I think everyone is good in practice at, is making sure that if you are having those types of conversations, to specifically point out that you're expressing your opinion as, as, and not necessarily that of the entire council. So even though each of us sits on the, the council, it can be confusing for, I think, folks in the public sometimes if they hear something from one person to assume that that's either the unanimous or majority view of the entire council. So I know, you know, whenever I'm in that situation, or even if I'm responding and writing to an email or something like that, I often, you know, process the entire thing by saying, well, you know, speaking from my point of view, but not necessarily on behalf of everybody else. So that's just a good practice to be in as well.
Deb, were you going to add something?
Yeah, I, I was at a training with Brenda Kelty, the abbotman for the state of Maine. It was hosted by the City of South Portland. It was in December of the year, probably like three or four years ago now. One of the examples that Brenda used was, say you had a constituent that asks to meet individually with each counselor. And they try to kind of outside of the public meeting influence. And they say, well, I met with Counselor Deveraux and she said this, and I met with Counselor Boucher and she said this. What do you think? And so all of a sudden, kind of behind or outside, I will say of a public meeting, those influences are happening and people aren't seeing all of them and aren't having the benefit of the same conversation, people hearing the same thing. So that was a really interesting point that Brenda brought up. So when we hear, you know, that people are contacting counselors individually to meet them on a certain matter, you know, I always kind of, you know, say to myself, oh, you know, is this one of those instances where unknowingly to people, you know, that all of a sudden outside of the public arena, there's kind of decisions and opinions being formed, you know, in that situation. So just something to think about.
And, and how do people know that on the council that somebody's been doing that example, Debbie?
Well, again, I think it gets back to what you said about, you know, if something particular, you know, is, you know, in front of the council at a meeting, you know, disclosing that. You know, we'll see emails once in a while that will, you know, be to a certain counselor and say, I'd like to meet with you on this. Then all of a sudden, a series of email follows to each individual counselor to meet, you know, and again, it, you know, it's striking that balance with yes, they, they have a right and they should be talking to, you know, the residents and so forth over matters. It's just when things start to gel a little bit, that they're saying this counselor said this and this said that, this is their opinion. Do we agree with them? And all of a sudden you get to a meeting and it seems like everyone's, you know, already made the decision before they get there. And sometimes, you know, it's really hard to detect that or whatever. But like you say, I think it just gets back to disclosing those certain things.
I think the other thing that's good to do in practice in those situations is, you know, by and large, many of the folks that reach out to us want to convey their opinion or concern or express, you know, or shed light on an issue or something like that. I think whether it's by email or by, you know, casual conversation at the IGA or whatever, our job is to listen to that and our job is to hear that and not necessarily immediately, you know, respond back with, you know, a solution to the problem or an answer or an opinion or anything like that. But, and I think most times, you know, when people feel like they've been heard, that goes a long way towards, you know, at the very least, you know, making them feel like somebody's paying attention, somebody's listening to the concern that they have. So, you know, different from how we might just, you know, casually talk with friends or family. But, you know, just a good, like I said, a good habit to be in as well.
I guess I'll move on to public records. And as we had said earlier, Debbie is designated person at the town to handle the FOIA requests. Let's see. Certain things are kept confidential by statute, so those, those records aren't available for response to a FOIA request, medical records and things like that. We also touched on executive sessions when they can be called, three fifths, majority of the council could move to go into executive session for, for specific reasons. And we've listed off those in the memo, you know, employment issues with some limitations and so forth. So, um, does anyone have any questions on going into executive session?
I'm just, I'm curious, Mike. We've had a couple of occasions this year where we've had executive sessions that we've gone into, you know, over Zoom. And I feel like the, the manager's done a great job of trying to separate both the, you know, the public part of the meeting from the executive session. We've tried a couple of different methods of, you know, either having separate Zoom links or, you know, just making sure that, that we schedule the executive session early so that we don't have participants, public participants involved in the executive session. I was just wondering if you had any thoughts on sort of best practices or, or other, you know, matters pertaining to those executive session requirements in this special format that we're in now.
Well, yeah, I can't speak really to the technology part of it on, on how you separate people out, but the same things apply that would, if you were in person, a motion specifically addressing the matter that you want to discuss in executive session. And then if that passes, give Matt time to work his magic on the Zoom rooms and, and then treat it just like you would a regular executive session. Same thing applies in terms of taking, taking notes, even though you're at home and you're taking notes. If it's during an executive session, those become public records. So you don't want to take any notes. We recommend you don't take any notes during an executive session. And obviously you can't poll the group to see which way you're going on, on a particular item. You can, you can discuss it. And, you know, from that, sometimes you can tell what, what way someone's leaning on a matter. But, but then you have to go back into the public area where people can view and then have the discussion and, and take whatever decision you, you need to take. I don't know if that was helpful, Jeremy. Okay, all right. And any other questions on executive sessions? Okay.
Mike, I'm sorry. I just had like a general comment, I guess, about FOIA requests. You know, every question that we field in the office, whether it's on the phone or in person, those are technically FOIA requests, right? They're, you know, we have, we hold public information and we're providing information as people request it. It's interesting that when we have requests and people use the term FOIA, they think that they're going to get something different or more because they said, you know, under FOIA, I'm requesting whatever it is. And that's not the case. So I just think it's, you know, interesting how some people throw that out thinking, again, they're going to get something different. We at the town have always, obviously you take these requests very seriously and we've always been of the mind is to, as soon as we can, to answer the requests, get the information to the people and, and so that they have their information. When we get a little more formal is the more in-depth requests so that we clearly understand what people are requesting. What's the timeframe you're asking for? What exactly are you requesting? So, you know, we don't always put people through the step of putting things in writing. You know, tell me what you're looking for. Okay, this is the department, they can answer it and, you know, be done with it. When it gets a little more involved, again, to make sure that we are answering the specific questions, we might ask them to put it in writing or they may supply it in writing. And we also do, as the law allows, we do charge for time when it exceeds, you know, the one hour and we charge for copies, you know, and all that stuff. And, and we are very, we treat everyone the same on that. You know, some people, most people don't really like it, you know, when we say, oh, you're going to charge? Well, we just spent three hours of time, we're going to. And that sometimes actually people then really request exactly what they're looking for and maybe cut down their requests to, well, this is really what I was looking for. I don't need all that other information. So, so again, we, you know, we answer FOIA requests just, you know, every day. Sometimes it just gets a little more involved and takes us longer to respond depending on what they're asking.
And within that context, we oftentimes can refer them to the website and they can find, you know, we can guide them to where they, it's, it's right there. It's just a question of helping people find where they can get that access. And when you do that, it's, it takes care of 99 and a half percent of the issues that we get inquiries on. If they know that they can find it right there or it's something that we can do fairly quick. But once they realize that you can help them navigate, it usually makes their life and ours easier, quite frankly, too.
All right. Do you want to spend a little bit of time on, on conflicts of interest? The state statute, you know, sets out what they are, consider a conflict of interest. And that's if you have a 10% or greater ownership in an entity that's appearing before council or has a matter that's before the council. So if, if you have that pecuniary conflict of interest, you really need to step down, disclose that, step down and not participate. If, you know, virtually, I guess you mute and maybe shut off your video or something, but in, if you're in person, you'd actually step down and not be with your other counselors while that is being deliberated and you can't make any comments on, on that point. So I guess also on this, I'd refer you to the Code of Ethics for the town counselors on, you know, accepting gifts or there's, I believe there's one that if you've accepted a gift, there's, I believe there's one that if you've accepted a gift of over a certain dollar amount, maybe a hundred bucks or something like that in the last 12 months and you, you can't participate in, in a matter that's before the council. So I think it's more difficult sometimes with bias because it's not necessarily a bright line, but you might feel really strongly about a particular for or against a particular thing that's going on and that's before the council. And again, this is probably more applicable for planning board or zoning board meeting, but it also applies to the, to the council. If you can't make a judgment on a matter because you're, of your bias that it would affect how you voted on something, then you're, you should disclose that and then perhaps step down. In, in a legislative body like the council, if you're voting on something, it's fine to have strong beliefs on, on, on a particular item. I mean, that's why, you know, you might have brought the matter because you feel really strongly on it. So I don't mean to suggest that you feel really strongly about the solar farm or something like that, that you, then you can't participate in, in the discussion or vote on that. But it's, it is something to keep in the back of your mind if it, if it happens to be, again, something that's, that's dealing more with a particular application for something. So I don't know if anybody has any additional questions on, on bias. But really, I think that the, the memo covers things pretty well. I think, I think going through the code of ethics for the town council is, is helpful. But I'm pretty much done with my talk. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them though.
Like the only thing I was going to add to, to punctuate the point on conflict of interest. I mean, I think in the past couple of years, certainly I've seen us swing towards almost over disclosing, you know, things that are, which is not a bad thing, but it's, it's just sort of the, the habit that we've gotten into. So even things that are, you know, highly innocuous and, and, you know, pretty inconsequential, just so that people are being super transparent about their relationships and, you know, particularly in a small town like this one. And I think that's been a good thing and it, it seems tedious at times and like it's overkill, but I think it's appreciated by the public. So.
Yeah, I think so too. And I think that if you, if it comes into your mind that is this something I should disclose, then I think you should disclose it. It, it can only hurt you later if you, if you didn't. And then people are suspect as to why you didn't talk about it or that that really did affect your decision. So I think it's, I'm sure it can be somewhat tedious sometimes, but I, I think it's definitely better to err on that side.
Does anybody have any questions or things that are unclear, things you want to add?
I'd just like to add, Deborah, when I joined the subcommittee, like seeing the first 20 minutes of this workshop would have been extremely helpful to understand it versus reading it. So as we have people appointed to subcommittees, it'd probably be great to send them a link to, to watch this.
Yeah. What we do also is we ask through the staff of each board and committee that their first meeting of the year, which will be coming up for many in January, that one of their first items is to talk about and review these matters as well. So yes, thank you very much. It's always, you know, again, as I said at the beginning, these pertain to board and committees too. And so we want to make sure that they have the information as well. So this memo and another memo that I have created will be sent on to the staff so they'll have it prepared for their first meetings of the year.
Anything else anybody has? Okay. Well, Mike, thanks very much. Appreciate your time on this as always.
Thank you and enjoy the snowstorm, everybody.
Yeah, be safe tomorrow.
Yes.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay. So next up is our goal planning. And so Matt, thanks for sending around the document that you did. And Penny had reached out to me and Nicole as well with some thoughts around this. So I'm excited to turn things over to them to talk through those things. I just want to, for the benefit of Gretchen and Nicole, give a little bit of history and context here. So when I joined the council five years ago, the goals were basically an Excel spreadsheet and we'd go around the table when we were in a room together and everybody would just take turns putting things on a laundry list. And it was literally just a line itemed list of, I want to do this, I want to do this, I want to do this, until we ran out of things that people were there to talk about. It wasn't very strategic. It certainly wasn't very sort of organized around broad themes and pillars and things like that. So we shifted to, from that approach to more of what you see here today several years ago. And the key pillars have remained pretty much the same. The, you know, effective leadership, sustainable community, et cetera, et cetera. The things that have changed on a year-to-year basis, some of them haven't, some of them have, are more of those bullet points of, well, how are we actually going to do this? What's the, you know, the, the actual action item that corresponds to living up to this particular goal or, or theme? So that's sort of how we arrived at, at this particular iteration. And Matt's done a good job of, in the last couple of years since he's been the manager, also, you know, using this to guide and direct the activities of staff where it's something that, you know, basically they have responsibility for carrying out. Or if there's something that comes up for us to consider, you know, trying to connect it, connect it back to one of the goals is, is why it's something that's come before us. And, and also then similarly, you know, usually at a midpoint in the year and then, you know, towards the end of the year, we'll sort of take measure of, well, what are these things that we accomplished? And what did we not? So on and so forth. So so just because that's how it is now, doesn't mean that it has to stay that way in perpetuity. I just wanted to give everybody the, the sort of background on that. So you had a little bit of context for it. So in particular, Nicole, I know, and I was very interested to see what you put together. I know, you know, from what, what I learned about you, you know, when you were running for, for the council, this is, you know, an area of professional experience and strength for you. And so I don't know, Matt, if you have that and want to share it or give Nicole the control to share that. Because I think before we get into detail on, on the what, I, I would like to introduce what Nicole shared for sort of a format and approach because I think it might be an interesting direction to go in.
Sure. I can pop that, I can pop that right up now.
Okay, thanks.
You're very welcome.
So Nicole, once Matt gets set up, if you want to maybe introduce this and, and walk us through it a little bit.
Yeah. So I've gone through the, the goal setting under that, like recycling committee. And I think that we have everything there. But when you're taking action on something, I feel like something like this could be really helpful to funnel it all down. So basically I, you know, took the goals we have now. And this is something that comes up a lot. It doesn't surprise me that there was a spreadsheet where it was like a brainstorming session essentially. And so once you get to the brainstorming, then you have to get to the point of like, well, how do we filter all of these ideas? How do we figure out what's the priority and what's not for right now? And so this is like a living, breathing document that will, that could change every year or even every six months or whenever it needs to be revisited. But I think the top level is really like, what is the town's focus? What, what do we want to do? We talk a lot about the vibrant town center, that housing diversity, conserving land in town, making the sustainable community. And those are just examples there that all this, this is just a framework and a process. I want to stress that I'm not saying this is what it should be or what the, the goals should be here, which is why I intentionally put like one through six for the goal section. But basically it's just like, what are the town's focus areas for right now? And so whenever we make any decision, we can go back and say, okay, but is this a decision that reflects the direction the town wants to be heading? So from there, that's kind of like the, what the town wants. And then from there, we get into like the town council priorities. And so for us right now, that would be mostly probably COVID-related things or things that are just going to happen in the next six months to a year. And that's probably some of these opportunities that are identified and the goals that you already have. And then the 21, 2021 to 22 goals is like the things that might take two years or so, like the projects that might get started, like the solar field, you know, actually breaking ground on that. And so this section's really about, okay, what are the priority things that we want to implement? And what projects are being worked on to support that the town wants this vision, right? And then the last section of the bottom is like, how do we do that? How do we actually accomplish these things? We accomplish it with effective leadership. So for example, if the project were something along the lines of meeting more often or, or having a goal-setting process for the subcommittees, right? That's effective leadership. That's engaged citizens. And so that's how we get some of our priorities. If our priority was to get our recycling to 50%, then we do that through, okay, we're going to oversee the recycling committee. We're going to make a recycling committee. We're going to have citizens on there that will do this work. And so this isn't, it's just a process to help us funnel. Okay, what are, what are, what does the town want? How are we going to do it or what are we going to do and how are we going to do it? If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any reaction from folks?
I do. I have a.
Yeah.
I, I really, I, I, I like the framework because it kind of hits on something that I've asked for a few years. And, and that's how, how we kind of track our progress on these goals. And I think by having the, the council priorities, that what are we focusing on in the, in the near term? It forces us to kind of look back here and say, okay, who's got it and where are we at with it? And so it, it almost creates the opportunity for us as councilors who maybe take a more vested interest in one of these areas to really ensure that we're, we're tracking toward them. I also think that the town focus areas, I think we can look to the comprehensive plan somewhat to kind of fill that piece in. So the other thing I like about this framework is it really forces us to pull the, the comprehensive plan a little forward and not have it just, and not have it be this, this daunting document sitting on, in my bookcase here that I look at every once in a while. And so I think what this does is it, it takes what we have had in place for the past several years and, and really makes it more tactical as well as strategic at the same time. So I think it would be a great exercise to be able to get what we have into here somehow.
Thanks, Penny. Other thoughts?
Jamie, I'll go. So yeah, I, I like this too. I'll say that, um, I think one of my larger thoughts that I had was probably similar to what Penny and Nicole were saying about. But as I read this, my first thought was there are not technically goals because goals should be measurable. They should be time-bound. So, you know, by September, we're going to do this. They should be actionable. And so I, I love the idea of getting sort of, what you talked about, Jimmy, getting everything down, kind of sitting together and these are the things we want to work on and getting sort of like a brainstorming sheet together. But then whether it's using what Nicole just presented to us or, or, or something different, taking that the next step to, you know, here are the top things we're going to work on and this is what it's going to look like. And sometimes you don't know what it'll look like, I'm sure. But, you know, for some of these, some of these are more actionable than others on here. So it would be nice if we kind of made them all more actionable and then pared it down a little bit so that we have, you know, maybe five or eight things that we're definitively working on in the next year and hope to achieve. And then keeping everything else sort of on the side burner so we don't forget about them. But, and I think that what Nicole just showed us is, is a nice way to do that. So.
Go ahead, Valerie.
I, I agree with everything that you've said. I really like the clarity that they give us, helps us focus. But I agree with what Penny had said because when we took the comprehensive plan, this is what we did is we put it together and we put, okay, we're going to accomplish this in one year. This is our one to three year. This is our five to 10 year. So it sounds like maybe we're going to integrate that with this plan somehow. So it sounds like that's what Penny was talking about too. Because that just makes sense. That way we can look at it and see what we're working on every year. So it sounds like maybe we need to pull that plan out and look at it along with this. What are your thoughts on that, Jamie?
Yeah, I mean, I think all of us have the opinion that, you know, the comprehensive plan does us no good. If it's two years worth of work that just doesn't get shelved, then nobody pays attention to it. And I think we, as we were going through and creating the different action items from that plan, I remember the, the long process we went through after the plan was written or as we were, I guess, getting to the end of it to actually break out those recommendations from the plan and turn those into short-term, medium-term and long-term projects. And also trying to counterbalance at the same time, the work effort involved in those and, and so on and so forth. So I think it makes sense to, you know, connect them together for that purpose. You know, again, just so that that work doesn't sort of exist off some, some other place, that it's something that we're, we're continually working against. The thing I liked most about what Nicole put together was, you know, the visual nature of it. I think it's much more digestible and, and easy for folks to relate to and see and understand in a way that, I mean, even, even what we have now is way better than a 60-line spreadsheet like we had before. But I, I think this continually improves upon it in a way that makes it more user-friendly, both for us and staff and also for the public if they were looking at it. So, so I, I think one of the things that, you know, always trips us up here is, you know, things that are priorities that, you know, we as the council actually don't have a lot of hand in, in carrying out, right? And maybe Matt wants to speak to that a little bit, right? So, you know, we, we set policy, we set a priority, but we're, in, in a lot of cases, not the actual doer. You know, like you might have in a, in a business or in other organizations. So I don't know, Matt, maybe it'd be worthwhile to hear from you how, how you use the goal. I described a little bit at the introduction, how you use the goals to work, you know, with the different department and staff in terms of setting your annual plans. But maybe you could talk about that in a little bit more detail.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Garvin. I'd be happy to. Yeah, we do, I mean, we do our normal business day in, day out and what we have to do to maintain our, our normal operations. But when we do come forward with, you know, ideas relating to like, like the solar project, for example, looking at that and trying to have that aligned with tie that to council goals or where there are projects that come forward, we do try to bring those in line as well as like ordinance changes, things along those lines where we do need to find either solutions, remedies or, or progress. We do try to find out we can tie that into council goals, especially from the staff side of it. I love the looks of this. This would be great. I mean, we can even implement this into the budget process. I love the looks of this. This would be great. I mean, we can even implement this into the budget process as well, I think. Where we can say, okay, you know, why are we, why are we looking to do this within this department? And we can say, we can tie it back to, you know, town council priority two identifies that they'd like to have this accomplished. And this is the goal for the council that they've, that they've established. So I think we can come back and link that a little bit better. I love the visual nature of it too. I really do. I think that, that is going to make it easy to use. But, but it is everything. I mean, we do our normal business, but the larger items that we do work on that, you know, may take, may take a longer term period. Those are oftentimes the high level desires of the council that we are trying to accomplish, either through individual steps by implementing different projects, or, or longer, or large terms items, such as like the short, short term rentals, and trying to get that finalized as well. So some of them are longer term, but they are something that may carry over from one year to the next. So, but that is, that's, that's, it really drives a, a good portion of what we try to do as a, as an operation.
And the other thing to mention here is that like, the town focus areas can change, right? So it, it's, I think the comprehensive plan is the voice of the community, right? It's all of the citizens input of what they would like to see in our town. And so that is our focus area, because that's what our citizens are telling us they want. And so that's like top of line for them. It's the big blue box at the top. And then from there, it's like, okay, let's interpret what they want into the things that are happening and opportunities that exist here. And so, yes, Jamie, we wouldn't be able to carry out the priorities, but we can, it could say something like, balance the commercial and residential needs. And then the goal of that is new short term rental ordinances. And so it's like, the priorities are almost what we have now, where it's the higher level piece. It's, it's not the specific time bound thing, and the goal goes underneath, making sure that that priority might have multiple projects underneath it, and that aren't related even. What I really like about this is that we could put it on the website and be like, this is, it's almost like a mission, like a strategic mission, more so than like specific goals. There'd probably be like multiple extra pages to this. But it, it kind of makes it easier to say, oh, we've accomplished number three. We're in the next year. It's like, okay, we're going to replace that one with a different priority. And so you can kind of keep this as a running tally. That's just moving things up. And like you said, more visually showing it. But I, I saw everything in the sheet that already existed. And I was like, okay, yes, we're doing all of this with effective leadership, great fiscal management, really engaged citizens, an excellent workforce. And then, you know, Penny mentioned regional collaboration. And so there's probably another one there, but it, it just felt like it's, that's what's supporting all of the priority and goal work.
I should probably back up just a second to suggest too, that it's not the intent that at tonight's meeting, we get all the goals down and walk away with a complete set here. So this will be sort of a two step exercise where, number one, I'm glad, you know, we're introducing this idea that Nicole brought to the table in terms of how to reorganize our thinking and, and how we present these goals and all that kind of stuff. Number two, I want to also get everybody's sort of thoughts and input. And we can sort of, you know, make a running list of what are the things that we want to organize into this new, this new view, this new look, if that's the way we go, which I'm not hearing any opposition to, which is nice. And then at our next opportunity is when we would sort of look at a more drafted version of that, that we'd then be, you know, making some final edits and finessing too. And then, and then go forward with that and adopt that at one of our earlier meetings and in the beginning of the year, probably the February meeting, based on that schedule. So in any case, I, I should have probably detailed that for folks, so you don't think that we're going to sit here till ten o'clock, hammering these things out or anything tonight. So Penny, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I think I understand, actually, I do understand exactly what you said. But I, I want to kind of ask a, a process question, because I, I agree that I think this evening is about kind of creating that brainstorm, you know, enhancement to the document which exists today. It's kind of the framework that's guiding people's brainstorming at this point in time. And then it would make sense to me that, I don't know if somebody or a couple of people take the raw materials that we come up with to create kind of a, a straw of a couple of these pages. Because once that's done, from my perspective, it would start to fall into place, because we, we would see those examples. So almost like a, a little subset of people kind of pulling, pulling the raw materials together, getting into this format in order that our next meeting would be extremely productive, because we would all kind of start to see the way that this framework can sit through our thinking. So, or we can overlay it. So that, is that kind of what you're alluding to?
Exactly what I, so you and I are on the exact same page there, Penny. That's exactly what I'm saying. So. And, you know, I'll also say that, you know, for the past several years, whether it be Valerie last year, or myself in the past, I think what you just described has been a responsibility and a task that's fallen singularly on the chairperson. And I'm, I'm, I'm more, more than happy to not be the one to do that. Partly because I think, you know, I mean, I, I was the one that sort of drafted the current framework. And I think if, if we're shifting that a little bit, I'd love to see somebody else, and whether it's Nicole, or Nicole and some other people, to sort of maybe take the lead on that for continuity of authorship there versus me trying to retrofit, you know, what I had come up with before into some other format and all that kind of stuff. Because I think, and then I'll, I'll also just be perfectly transparent, you know, from a timing perspective. It's not something that I, I think I'm going to necessarily have a whole bunch of time to dedicate towards either. So if somebody else does have that flexibility, you know, I would certainly appreciate it. So, so I think if we can leave the meeting tonight with clarity on, you know, which one or two or three folks want to, want to do that offline work, that would be one thing to accomplish. The other thing, which I kind of would like to shift the discussion into now, is, you know, surfacing some of the either new things or edits to existing material that's on here that people just have for ideas, that either they, they don't see expressed here in what we have from our, our past year's goals, or those either need to be, you know, built out further, or augmented in some way, things like that. And Penny, I'm going to turn to you to start, because, you know, you had shared and drafted a few points for folks to consider that I think are all organized around a couple of common themes of looking, you know, looking beyond just the borders of our town with some things. And some, and maybe you want to take over and just talk about, you know, what's on your mind, sort of.
Okay. Um, I, I'll kind of guide people through, and I apologize for my formatting issues, but I was in a wicked hurry, so I forgot to do some page break stuff. So anyway, my apologies.
Penny, would it be helpful if I pulled up your, your edit that you shot over the other day? I can do that. It'll just take.
You sure? Do you have the technology?
I have, I have the desire.
Well, that's one step in the right direction. Okay, while you're playing with technology, I'll get started. Basically, some of the things that I put in here, I didn't have a home for, so I kind of stuck them out here. But I, as you can see, I started out with the, the question of how we're going to leverage what we learned through this whole COVID experience. And I think that as we go through and we start looking at opportunities for twenty twenty one, twenty two, that we're going to, within these, some of the near term things that we can do, we should identify those and we, we should take action on them and, and not let too much time go by. So I put that right up front. The other thing around sustainable community, what I needed to get in here, and I didn't know exactly how to word it, but I think the framework that Nicole developed is going to help, help me and maybe others kind of refine this. And it's that, we've got some real challenges in front of us relative to challenges to what people are experiencing out in Cape Elizabeth, as well as outside of our town. And we see it in our surrounding communities. And I think I've said this a zillion times, and I will keep saying it. Portland carries the burden for our communities. And it's time for communities to start stepping up and helping participate in solutions. And I know that Jeremy's on the regional coalition, but I, I don't see a lot of action around homelessness. I see some action around food insecurity. I don't see a lot of action around addressing mental health issues. And I think those are things that we need to start talking about within our town, because we have people who access and need access to those services. We might not see them on our streets, but I bet we see them on the streets of Portland.
If I could jump in for a second, I, so I think one of the things that occurred to me as I was reading through some of these similarly themed items here, and I understand what you were just saying, and agree, you know, there wasn't necessarily a bucket for, you know, where they naturally fit. I actually think that there's probably a need for a, you know, another bucket, you know, how, again, however we wind up actually sort of designing this. But it's focused on human services and public welfare. And I don't, I don't mean welfare in the sense of, you know, a welfare program or anything like that, but people's well being. And I think that broadly, you know, especially after, you know, some of the things that we all experienced this past summer, you know, springing into the summer around equality and social justice and things like, like those are, those are some of the bigger things that I think would fall into that. And what you just talked about was, you know, some of the, you know, regional social welfare issues, you know, that are, that are paramount in the community. I think all of that needs to be formulated into a thing, rather than trying to, you know, tag it on to these other areas that we already have, just for the sake of fitting a, you know, fitting the puzzle pieces together. So.
And, and then I got into that we do need to address the paper streets. We got to make that a priority for this year.
Do we have to? Are you sure?
Yeah.
I'm just kidding.
Yes. I don't want to ever talk about them again. Um, and I, I'm sorry. And then short term rentals, we're going to put that one to bed also in twenty twenty one. No pun intended. Um, anyway. So, and we know that.
For a minimum of seven nights stay and forty two days.
Exactly. You got seven days to make it happen. So, so those were the things that popped out, that those are items that we've been working on, that we, we really need to bring to resolution. So that, to me, I like that framework that Nicole has, because those park right in there as near term things to make happen. On the fiscal management, I think, and I, I, I think about this as we've got a lot of things on our, our plate. We had to make some big trade offs in twenty, in, in the twenty twenty budget, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget, that we got to make sure that we aren't sacrificing constantly. We need to figure out a way to, to solve the many, address the many issues that we have in front of us from a fiscal perspective, and, and not short, continue to shortchange some of the department needs. So I didn't know how to get that in there. I think it's being very vigilant about the fact that we have a finite number of tax dollars to expend, and, and be cognizant of that. And then as we get into, I don't think that one, it's just kind of an extreme, it's common. Engaging our citizens, this kind of goes back to my point about what were our learnings from the whole COVID world? The fact that we've had so much greater engagement, and how we continue to leverage the technologies that allow us to do that. And I really think that we need to, and I'm not asking everybody to run a meeting like Penny Jordan does, but we need to, when people show up at meetings, they need to feel as though they're heard and heard more than once. And so it's really going back to, yes, people can speak on things not on the agenda. They can speak upfront. They can speak before items. They can speak at the end of the meeting. But some of the, and I've heard it several times, relatively Conservation Commission, that people aren't allowed to engage, or they don't feel like they're being heard. And so I just don't know if there's a way that we can create a more, a more, more of a dialogue with citizens that show up at meetings versus constraining conversation. But I talked to Matt about this, it's that that's the way I work. Not everybody likes to work that way. But I think citizens who show up at meetings are asking that. And if we want citizens to engage, then we need to give them the space to do that. So that's what that's kind of all about. And so that also gets into those protocols and what they might be. And then.
Can I respond to that one for a second, Penny?
Sure.
My opinion on it is, it's very different whether it's a workshop or, or, or a business meeting for a couple of different reasons. Number one is just from a, you know, efficiency and time management perspective. You know, many of our meetings run quite long as it is. And I, I, I worry a little bit that if we get too indulgent around freewheeling conversation, or speak at the beginning of an issue, and then speak again at the end of an issue, you know, we're, we're opening up to a real, you know, sort of rabbit hole of, of, of never actually, you know, moving business forward. So that's number one. Number two is, I, I, I don't think that we're in a position, and I think quite the opposite, where we have abundant means of people providing their opinion to us, whether it be email, whether it be coming to a workshop, whether it be picking up the phone and talking to any one of us. And, you know, I, I, I don't think it's a situation where, I don't know, if part, part of, part of it for me feels like there's some responsibility on the citizen to not also just wait till the eleventh hour and just show up at the last meeting when you're about to vote. If it's something that's, you know, that important.
I agree with that.
The last thing, just sort of functionally too, is, I mean, I know that we have our public comment prior to an agenda item for the purpose of hearing, you know, the opinion and the feedback. But then, you know, once we get into our own debate, and then actually voting on something, you know, we're not going back on it at that point, right? So I, I don't, I don't know. I, I don't know how talking about some, you know, giving people a chance to respond publicly following the item, I'm, I'm not sure what that adds to, maybe I'm misunderstanding your point, but.
I think, I think, Jamie, that the town council does pretty well with getting, listening to citizens and incorporating their thinking and what, and giving people opportunities to speak. It's some of the committees that if, if you have citizens that show up at committee meetings, whether, you know, it's Thomas Memorial Library, or the Fort Williams, or Conservation Commission. If you've got people showing up those meetings, then they're there because they are interested in participating. in participating in that topic. And.
So is that not happening? I don't know, Matt or Deb, or I mean, Nicole, you're coming from recently sitting on one of those committees. Is it, Jeremy, I know you're, you're going to some of the Conservation Committee meetings for various purposes. Is that not happening?
The Recycling Committee, it definitely happened. We, we very rarely had guests attend, but when they did, it was usually they had some sort of initiative or project they were doing and we were very collaborative with how can we, you know, promote that you're doing this event or whatever. So it happened there, but it's also, we didn't have many guests.
I, I think it generally happens when people do come to specific committees, they, they, they're ultimately interested in a specific topic that's on the, the agenda that evening. And I think what Council Jordan's looking for is more of a, uh, an interactive dialogue. So the person could possibly, and correct me if I'm wrong, Penny, uh, they can respond after they hear what the, what the committee's positions or interpretations are, and then perhaps provide input after that. And it's, it's a tough balance because committees, you know, and boards do, do need to get their, get their work done as well. So it's just, it's a, it's a fine balance, I guess, is what is what you try to find.
This is making me think of the fact that the Recycling Committee started a Facebook page. And so people did write in to talk about how they want the swap shop open or when we change the bottle, when is the bottle shed open? So there was back and forth communications in the comments section there that I think is kind of that thing that people are used to now. You can state your point and then someone replies and then you come back and reply and you can keep doing that. So. But yes, take, getting business moving forward is a huge time constraint.
The, the other challenge that comes to mind is thinking about short-term rentals and you've been working on that for, it seems like a long time. But, you know, as you get closer to the end, there are folks who have, you know, there, there's the point, counterpoint. And if you have a debate at the beginning, then the committee gets to talk about it and then debate at the end. The only concern I would have thinking about that is burnout of your committees and terminal, terminal meetings. Unfortunately, just, and it depends, hot subjects are hot subjects.
Well, maybe it's a simple, maybe it's as simple as reinforcing with the particular committee that I keep hearing about.
I think that's.
The conservation, which is, I mean, that touches people.
So they don't take public comment? I just want to make sure I understand the issue.
My understanding is that people have felt limited in comments. That they, of course, they do the, the three minutes done, boom, onto the meeting. I'm, I'm just saying that there might need to be a reinforcement of ensuring that public is heard at, at least three points in those meetings because it should be at the beginning and they can be heard again at the end.
Well, the thing I would remind, yeah, that's absolutely correct. And before each individual item. I, I guess I'm not clear why any of the committees would not be using the same exact protocols and procedures that we use, which is talk about anything not on the agenda at the beginning, talk about each individual item as you proceed through the agenda, and then talk about it at the end. Furthermore, I would just emphasize to all of us as counselors and then, you know, would hope the message carries forth to any of those committee members too, that if in the course of discussing or debating an item, any of us are more than welcome to call on somebody that has spoken or is in the audience to answer questions. You know, we all have that right, uh, you know, as far as the use of our time in discussion and debate. So, and, and I can point to numerous examples where we've done that, where, hey, can you, can you clarify for us? Can you help us, you know, can you tell me more about that? I'd like to know more. I think that what I, what I don't want to do is set up a framework and a built-in structure though, where number one, you're creating an opportunity for, you know, single opinions to dominate the discussion. You're creating an endless sort of loop of public input, you know, committee or council debate, more public input. Oh, I guess we better go debate somewhere. I mean, it just becomes never-ending at that point. So.
No, I understand. Maybe it's just through the committee, um, training that we reinforce.
Okay.
And that'll be, uh, you know, we'll stress that to staff as well because we do have that, uh, the standardized agenda format. And, you know, looking at, uh, looking at all the different committees work, they have the same format that, you know, is on the council. They're laying out public participation at each meeting and saying, you know, you do have the ability to speak at the beginning, three minutes and up to 15, depending upon the subject for each agenda item and the public opportunity at the end. But what I'll do is I'll re-stress to staff who do provide support to committees that we need to maintain that operation as our standard, not to deviate from it at all. And I think that's, you know, as we go into the new year and we have new committees, new committee members, it's a good opportunity to hit refresh on that.
Okay.
Okay. Penny, you want to finish going through here?
Yeah. The next thing had to do with an item that even has a date on it, January 2021, that we were to develop, to develop a specific plan for fire and rescue services, that what's our strategy over the next five to seven years. And so that's still on the radar from my perspective. And should be a tactical or near-term item for 2021, 22. The other thing is, is that I think that we need a, um, a strat, we need the strategy and we need to start implementation around addressing cell coverage and electrical outages in towns. I re, I, I hear it more and more and more about electrical outages. And I don't know if there's a way to put a, a plan in place that says over time we will attempt to move electrical lines from above ground to below ground. I mean, that's a, that's probably a 20-year project right there, maybe 30. But the cell issue, the technology is moving faster than we can even imagine. And there's no reason why in the town, in our town, we can't have cell coverage in all of the neighborhoods. So I think that needs to be a priority in, um, in this year, in especially seeing office buildings are going to become obsolete and home offices are going to become the way of the future. So, or the way of the current. So I think that is a, is a key thing that we need to discuss. So those are, those are mine off the, and I reviewed, I read all of the, everything that was currently in there. And as Nicole alluded to, they are very broad. And so, yes, they can, they can endure year after year after year. So I think by dismantling this document, it's going to become even more valuable to us.
Thank you, Penny, for adding all that additional thought and bringing those forward. Are there other folks that have anything on their minds for things that aren't addressed there? Or are addressed, but maybe need to be revisited? Go ahead, Jeremy.
Um, thanks, Penny and Nicole. I think those are all great thoughts and I agree with them. Especially I, I would like to see us move, making some more progress on some of the regional coordination around homelessness and social services. I think we were actually getting close to a point where we were maybe going to have a proposal before COVID happened and we need to go back and dig that up and brush it off and bring it back in front and center because I, I think it's more than time. I, I just had two, well, I shouldn't, I shouldn't put just in front of it. I had two sort of big-ticket projects that I, I don't, I think they're both bigger than what we can pick off this year, but I would like to see us focusing and making progress on. The first is sort of a pet project of mine, which is paying attention to Sawyer Road. And, you know, by extension, I think probably also Spurwink, those two crossings. We're going to have to figure out a policy solution at some point for what we want to do with those. And I think, I, you know, I, I think they're, without action from the council, we're going to just wind up replacing them in kind, which I think would be a mistake. So I, I'd like to put that on our radar screen, but whatever the, the chunk we can peel off this year to help moving those projects forward. The other one is a big project, which we knocked, didn't, didn't make it into our capital budget last year, but I think we do need to come back and start making some serious plans with the school board about what the renovation project is going to look like and timing around that.
Okay. Thanks, Jeremy. Go ahead, Valerie.
Well, I think, Jeremy, you're going to be hearing from the school boards about, about that very soon. So that's going to be on our radar at our budget meetings. And when Penny was talking about cell coverage, my understanding is we're working on that. And I think that you're going to find in the very near future, what, um, Apple and Elon Musk, they're creating a whole network of satellites so that our cell coverage is going to change very fast in the very near future. So that may be taken care of for us.
I think you need towers or something in order to receive the signal from the, um, from the satellite.
Yeah, I, I don't know how many towers we'll need, but it, but it's something for us to talk about and figure out. That's going to be changing really fast. One of the things I'm thinking about, and we've talked about this before, is climate change. I think that's something that's very, very urgent, very needed. We've all talked about this. I'd really like to see us set some sort of visionary goal. We have achievable goals. What about something that says we'll reduce our carbon footprint by 50% by 2030? Or so, and that doesn't have to be exactly it, but something that's visionary for us to, to achieve or that we're going to become a zero-waste municipality by 2050 or some sort of achievable goal. I know that there were the, and Matt and I talked about this, the C40 cities that all adopted the Paris Climate Agreement. And they, they basically represent 25% of the population of the, the world. And they're looking at some of these really powerful goals. So I was thinking it'd be nice for us to think, think in those terms and set some sort of a goal where we're going to even just waste minimization. You know, hearing about the, you know, Northern Ireland sending their plastics here to Maine. And that, that's, that was kind of shocking to me. I didn't know that that was happening. But what if we reduce our own plastics or we start setting up things and talking about how we're part of this bigger community? You know, I know the state has certain regulations, Portland's enacted certain regulations. Well, what about us? I think that's important for us to do too. I, I'd also like to see us talk about the pesticide and herbicide ordinance and really get something like that going. And then that other piece of sustainability and community. I'd really like to see us support local agriculture and aquaculture. And I know we support it now, but I'd like to see us support it in maybe, um, a variety of ways. And I know Penny, you probably have lots of thoughts on that. But it'd be really nice to include farmers, fishers, beekeepers, local gardeners in some sort of plan that we have where we're, we're that aquaculture and agriculture in our community. And I'm sure we have some visionary ideas about how to do that. But it'd be nice to see that as part of our vision statement of what we do here. Not only do we look at preserving open space, but we see our historic value of aquaculture and agriculture and supporting that. So, and I, and I don't know how we, you know, exactly how to work that. I'll think more about it. But I'd really like to see that as part of our world of the community. Some of my thoughts and our goals.
Can I, can I add something to the climate change? Because I don't know if you've seen Janet Mills, the report that they produced around climate change. It could make sense for typicalists to draw from that to then help the implementation of the state's climate change plan. So we don't have to create something ourselves. We leverage the work that's, that's already been done. And it's a pretty, it's a pretty good piece of work at this point in time. And I don't agree with all of it, but I agree with some of it. So.
Valerie, thanks for your ideas. I, I want to respond to the climate change one in particular. So I, I wholeheartedly agree with you and I think there's probably fairly broad consensus on the part of most of the counselors around the focus and, and need to take action as it relates to matters brought on by climate change. What I probably divert slightly in opinion on is just how to do that and how we as a community and specifically we as a town council respond to that. Because I think this is, and I've maintained for a number of times going through this exercise, that that is one of the utmost areas that is just ripe for a more regional approach versus, you know, two dozen towns and cities and communities in Southern Maine, for example, all coming up with their own plans and their own goals. And, you know, so if our goal is 50% by 2030, but South Portland's is, you know, 25% by 2040, well, what good is, you know, I mean, like, this is something that needs a much more coordinated and cohesive response. I've talked to Troy Moon about it before because he sits on the board of EcoMaine with Matt and I. And it's something that he's, you know, very closely involved in, obviously with the, the One Climate Action Plan that Portland and South Portland have put together. What, what I think makes the most sense is for us to be driving towards solutions on that by joining up to the plan that's already in place and saying, okay, how, how can we just be almost like, you know, like the Paris Accord? How can we be a signatory to that? And how can we then, you know, establish the things that are going to be implementation steps for us? We don't have either the, the, the resources from a people or budget standpoint to be drawing up our own plans and putting those things into action. But if, if somebody else has already basically done all the work for us, I think it makes all the sense in the world for us to just sign on to that where it makes sense and, and then begin to execute. So that's just, that's, you know, my opinion on that. And I think that if, if we were to do that, you know, number one, it's a, it's a serious step forward from just saying, oh, let's, you know, try and increase recycling rates. Let's think about, you know, installing a solar farm, you know, on a green, on a brown field location, all that kind of stuff. And, you know, sort of, you know, assigns us to a more specific set of action items, I guess. But.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
To that, thank you. Looking squarely at Council Gabrielson and thinking this is something that would be great fodder to bring forward to the Metro Regional Coalition. And I, I know we've had some efforts on this in the past and a couple of items. Quite frankly, and sadly, most notably is the opioid epidemic that had hit the area as well as the pandemic which swiftly followed, unfortunately. So it's taken some of those efforts off, offline, but I think this would be, uh, would be something that they could also, you know, that would be a good vehicle for us to pursue and to be a part of that as well. Just thinking about other areas because as, as you say, Mr. Chairman, you know, having, you know, 27 communities trying to do 27 different protocols is difficult. But if we can do that, we can gain strength in numbers as well as leverage some of the great assets such as Troy Moon and Julie Rosenbach in South Portland and work with, you know, because we have other items. As Council Gabrielson had brought up, the Sawyer Road culvert that we've, we've tag teamed with Scarborough on and we'll have to address at some point in time and that, and hopefully in that sooner rather than. and will have to address at some point in time and hopefully sooner rather than later. Because, you know, it impacts a road that both towns use and replacing that culvert in response to climate change. So it is, it is something that we're all linked together on. But I think that could be a great and successful vehicle to approach that with, especially as we come out of this pandemic and we start working on positive approaches.
And not to pile on on that too much, I agree with your approach. And also just, you know, want to make that point that it's not just a transportation sustainability, but bringing that right is potentially one of our more significant carbon sequestration projects in town. If we can get that marsh to start capturing atmospheric carbon again, as it should be.
Any other thoughts that folks have? Matt, were you taking notes on some of these things?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, great. Go ahead Jeremy.
I was just gonna say, I think the little red dot that says REC is.
That's my backup plan.
Okay, good. I didn't see that we were doing that. Sorry.
It helps to type this furiously.
So I want to make sure if there are no other, you know, glaring omissions or things that folks want to make sure are included, maybe if we want to circle back then around to how to move this forward and organize this in a way that we can have a draft to respond to and then get just more into the editing and, you know, sort of finalizing mode. Nicole, is that something that you're interested in taking the lead on or?
Yeah.
Working with a couple of other people on there?
Yeah, I would love to work with a couple of other people just for like history and knowledge of, you know, some of these things that have come in the past, but I'm happy to take the lead on that.
So tying back to the first point we were making with how to conduct business and all that kind of stuff, I'd say if there's a plan to, you know, have an actual discussion or meeting about it, then let's work through Matt and Deb just to make sure that, you know, if there's a need to notice it, that it is noticed and how to participate that in that and whatnot. If it's going to be, you know, one person or multiple people sort of doing independent work streams that then just get fed back in, then there's not necessarily a need to. So there are different ways to choreograph and orchestrate that. But.
Yeah, I'll take a stab at just figuring out how all of this needs to move. And then go to Matt and say, okay, this is what I need to do and help me figure out how to do it.
Yeah, so just to reemphasize, you know, sort of not working it through email and stuff like that would be preferred. So and I'm happy to weigh in and participate. I appreciate the opportunity to not sort of have ownership of it though, so. Penny?
Yeah, Nicole, if you want some help, this is like the type of stuff that I really enjoy. So I know it sounds odd, but putting things into framework so that people can understand it. So if you want some help, just yell when you're ready.
Yeah, I'll figure out how things need to move. And then, like I said, talk to Matt and figure out like what's okay to ask, what's not. The one thing that I love, if we could maybe do, I don't know if we'll have time to do it tonight, but if we can come up with like, just the brainstorm session of the, what that top level should be, the town focus areas. And like, I think some of us said, like, those can come straight out of the, maybe even the mission statement of the comprehensive plan. But if we can maybe just brainstorm them all out and then choose five or six of them that we feel like should be the priority ones for the coming year. It doesn't mean the rest aren't important. It just means in the world as it exists today, these are the top ones. So that would be a great exercise, I think, to go on. And then that will feed what the rest of the things should shake out to be.
Sure thing. Anybody want to start off? I'm just trying to pull up the comp plan.
I have it on my heart, on my desktop.
I don't have my comp plan handy. I'm sorry, my brain needs to think about that. Sorry.
I'm emailing it to Matt.
Oh, that's right. I forgot that it's 100 meg file.
Yeah, it's a monster.
Like, why is this taking so long to open?
What about that form, the really long page that we had where we were putting our priorities and everything? I was trying to find that. You know what I mean, Matt?
Yep, the Maureen spreadsheet.
Yes.
I'm trying to navigate on that as well. Let's see.
I have a hard copy around here somewhere. Hold on.
I think Valerie Adams kind of reworked that. So I was kind of, I was looking to see if it's in an email from Valerie.
Okay, I have up here the recommendations. I'm just gonna throw this up. Does this look familiar?
Unfortunately.
She'll have the economy, transportation, housing, facilities and services, fiscal capacity and capital investment, natural resources, agriculture and forestry.
These are all the chapters from the actual plan.
Yes, they are. And then the recommendations for each one is identified under each category.
Yes. It's almost nearly opened up. I mean, it is really slow to open this file. But in the, I know in the front of the plan, though, we have sort of the executive summary. And finally opened up. There we go. There's the executive summary and the vision statement. And I think both of those are, I think, what can be sort of foundational items for what Nicole's talking about for.
Yeah, I agree. The vision statement says a lot, though, so.
And we tried to shorten that quite a bit. Jeremy remembers, we tried to call that down.
Well, I see, it says like, with breathtaking coastlines, lighthouses, farms, forests, and leafy neighborhoods, all in proximity to Portland, Cape Elizabeth will continue to be a desirable place to live. We honor our heritage and history. We strive to encourage citizen engagement, support excellence in our schools, diversify housing choices, create a vibrant town center, preserve our open space, farming and natural resources, and connect neighborhoods through a safe pedestrian network. Embracing these ideals, our revisions for Cape Elizabeth to remain a highly desirable and welcoming community. So pulling things out of that, I see the, and this is just brainstorming. It's not like the end list, but I see citizen engagement, excellence in schools, diverse housing, vibrant town center, preserve open space, resources, and connecting neighborhoods, safe neighborhoods, I think. The points that were brought up earlier, I think we had the human services, public welfare, could be like the safe neighborhoods piece of things too.
I think those might be different.
Yeah, I think the safe neighborhoods is more about what I would call walkability or active neighborhoods.
Active neighborhoods.
Or active communities.
So that's a start. There's the sustainability piece we've talked about.
Should I scroll up to the executive summary up above as well?
Yeah, there might be more in there to pull from. I'm hoping is that we can maybe get like 20 ideas and narrow them down.
That paragraph about issues might be something to draw from because we're getting into more policy-related things there too.
Yep. I think affordable housing is a better term than diverse housing because it has a bigger scope. But I think, I mean, just the success of the senior property relief program shows that affordable housing is a piece of things too.
Yeah, I think that diverse housing, though, to me speaks more to making sure there's different types of housings for different life stages, right? So other councils have heard me before talk about, you know, my in-laws and their empty four-bedroom house and, you know, making sure that if they want to stay in Cape, that there's a right-sized place for them to go to. It doesn't necessarily, affordability isn't necessarily the primary concern there. It's more just, is there something that fits that need? So I think, I think, I think those are two sides of the same coin. There's one half of it that has to do with affordability, but one half of it just has to do with diversity of stock.
Have the community piece. Well, I feel like there are some other things I like leader and education, natural resource protection, support for firms and local food. I mean, those are, I would say if someone who lives in Cape Elizabeth would come up with those on their own, I was like, yeah, that's who we are.
We could possibly say housing and transportation so that it sort of covers those two issues, whether it's low or moderate income housing or diversity of housing or if it's transportation issues. Might do it broad, like something like that.
Only thing I'm not pulling from this is like the public works and the upkeep side of the town, the like future-proofing. So, you know, there's not an unnecessary burden on our future generations in Cape Elizabeth with aging fire trucks and things like that.
We've always referred to that just broadly as infrastructure, whether it's road infrastructure or other sort of service infrastructure, but.
And it even ties into fiscal policy as well on that side. Adequately prepare and plan for long-term, for lack of a better term, care and watering of the, or feeding and watering of the municipal infrastructure.
Normally, when I do this type of exercise, we have, we're in a room together and we have sticky notes that we can write an idea on each sticky note and kind of like move them around of like, okay, let's keep these. Let's put these on the parking lot. Okay, well, that is 13, I guess, focus areas for, you know, what is wanted in the town or what are the characteristics of our town or focus? Are there any that stand out as should be front and center for 2021? Not, remember, this is living, breathing document. It's not a forever, everyone always has to have this at the top of their list. We've talked about a lot of them already, but if there's any that someone wants to nominate as, yes, this needs to be in 2021.
I would just jump in and say, you know, thinking about where we are as a town and as a country, you know, in the short term for 2021, we probably should have a focus around, you know, both a continuing COVID response to the extent that we still have some focus and work to do on that as well as sort of good, solid fiscal management, thinking through the economic, you know, situation we're likely to be dealing with in 2021. I don't know what that bucket's called, but.
I mean, I would probably call it like self, safe and healthy neighborhoods, right? I mean, safe and healthy community of some sort, some phrasing around that that can be played with because. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's more, I think it's more effective, effective response to, you know, the emergency situation more than the safe and healthy neighborhoods. It's still not quite the right name for the bucket, but it seems like that's going to one way or another. That's probably those, the combination of those two things is probably going to be eating up a significant chunk of our focus over the next six months.
Can I say something? I can't, I need to read things, see, can you put what you're looking at on the screen? Or otherwise I can't participate because I can't wrap my head around things that have been said.
I'm similar. I understand if Matt is okay giving me access to share.
You're good to go.
Okay. I'll see if I can blow this up to make it legible because it's small even for me. Nope. When in doubt, change the font size, right? There we go. Okay. I mean, we know that the schools are going to be on here. But I think some of that falls more under the town infrastructure. But I think some of that falls more under the town infrastructure. And we're, the biggest challenge will probably be around how do we balance borrowing with the limited pool of, of property taxes?
Affordable is affordability? Affordable as in? How's it? Okay.
I think too that number six would include the, the fire services, what Penny was talking about earlier.
And I think it also is the cell tower. And those are some big issues that a lot of people have been bringing for it. So sustainability is from a fiscal perspective or from infrastructure perspective or from a Yeah, I it's such a, it's such a catch-all.
It is, yeah.
I'd say from an environmental perspective.
And we can put each of those in.
Is natural resource protection really encompassed under preserving resources, space farming and resources?
Yeah.
Might fit.
I guess, Matt, another way to start like thinking about these things is what projects are currently in motion, like big capital projects?
Yeah, we'd look at like the solar project, LED light project conversion for next year. The two probably large, larger items that we'll have. And then there's also
Ongoing sidewalk project.
Exactly. We've got the sidewalk segment seven and eight that'll be ongoing. Our stormwater management is also huge in that as well. That's a that's an area that we're always monitoring and trying to manage.
It's interesting to look at some of the specific projects, too, because you could also take some of those projects and fit them under other goals, you know, looking at the solar and the LED conversion. I could see them being part of that, that sustainability, climate change response bucket that we were, we're talking about earlier. Similarly with the sidewalk projects, you know, I, you could just as easily put those under vibrant town center along with the acceptance of town green. Sort of where, where to put things.
Yeah, I think that one of the first things we'll do is take all of these things talked about in the current goals and just kind of pull them out. It's like, okay, what are the common themes? I think the biggest thing I can try and get down to is what are those four or five areas that we should be spending our time on next year? So we know already two of them, right? I mean, this one could honestly be split out into two in and of itself.
On number eight, can, rather than say preserve, why not say something around valuing? Because if you value it, you can take many different strategies. And it's not always preservation. You value it, you're going to say we value the farms in our community and so therefore we are consumers of their products. We value the natural resources. Therefore, we're going to protect them.
I agree.
That then kind of puts 13 up into that as well. You would eliminate 13 if you change it to valuing. And then you can also do three, four, right into five, housing and transportation. You don't need affordable housing, diverse housing. It all roll into one housing.
Yep.
Valerie, you've been the liaison to the, what did we call it? Wind up calling it the Civil Rights Committee. How quickly is that coming back to the council for action? And should that, where should that fall in terms of like these broad priorities?
I was thinking about that. Well, part of it is citizen engagement and part of that is going to be our you know, excellent in schools to excellence in schools, leaders in education. So they're working on that also with schools. Human services, public welfare. But I was looking at number seven and thinking that's really kind of in number four, isn't it? Human services, public welfare. Aren't we talking about schools, fire services? But I think you know, what, what are we really calling it? You know, civil rights.
I think it's really about valuing diversity. There's, there's a focus area for our town is, is valuing the diversity in our community or, and that's just off the top of my head because I think it's just Penny's view of the world. I think that what we're trying to get at from a civil rights perspective is engaging and understanding. And so by creating understanding, we learn to value that diversity. So I think that kind of is a standalone thing. I wouldn't want to put it under human services, public welfare, because that's creating an, an image. I think it's about people and
No, I think, I think that's right. And I think that that's a good way to say it. And that should probably be highlighted as a focus that we're going to have for this year is the committee will be coming back to us very soon with some suggestions and letting us know kind of where they're, where they're at and where they're headed.
You brought up a good point when you said it, you know, it falls under excellence in schools and citizen engagement, too, because I do think citizen engagement is a huge piece of all this. I mean, we need to engage them. You know, to follow executive orders, but, but also, you know, these capital projects coming up, we need to engage them and keep like really transparent, open, honest communications with them about what it all means. And people are more engaged than ever right now because they can be with the nature of virtual meetings. So I do think that that's another big opportunity while we have their attention. How do we retain it for afterward and you know, filler committees and things like that.
Does the vibrant town center cannot integrate in with eight somehow? Because that's one of the things we talk about around creating a vibrant town center is the walkability and the connectivity of neighborhoods through trails and those kinds of things. So.
Okay. Well, I think this has quite a bit that I can work with and we can at least get the draft going and you know, have something more solid to look at at the next workshop, I guess.
Okay. Well, Nicole, thank you for volunteering to take that on and also for the work already done, like I said, to develop what I think is a good framework for this. So appreciate that. Penny, thanks for all of your input and all the rest of you as well in the, in the meeting discussion here tonight. If there are additional thoughts that you have, if you want to individually, you know, send those along by all means. And then we can plan to regroup at our January workshop to do more of a review and react and further editing exercise. So Penny, you want to say that?
Yes. At January workshop, we were doing the short-term rentals, which I think is going to take more than significant amount of time because we're going to be working on words and.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to scheduling a second workshop if we need to.
Cool. That makes sense. Good, 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 good.
Do you think we should look at dates in January to do that?
Just calling up the calendar now. So our existing workshop is on the fifth. Is that right?
That's on, on the sixth. Yes, on the sixth. And then regular council meeting on the 11th.
I don't mind doing backwards.
So you know that on, the, the sixth is not currently on the website calendar.
It, it, it will be.
Okay, just.
We're on it, sir. Yep.
Yeah, okay.
And then on the 21st is also that I think it's the 21st. It needs to be put on there as well. It would be the joint workshop with the
I have the 20th on my calendar, which is a Wednesday. I think that.
Is it, is it the 20th?
Yeah, I thought it.
Yeah.
Sorry. The 13th is wide open if, if that would work as well.
Sorry. That's what I was just looking at was the 13th. I think that might make the most sense. Does that work for everybody?
I mean, I've got the Civil Rights Committee meeting on the 13th. Is there any way we could do it on a Tuesday on the 12th, maybe?
What time is the Civil Rights meeting? Oh, yeah, mute.
It's at seven.
It's, okay. Hold on a second. I think that that would work, but I'm just double checking.
Yes, Conservation Committee and the School Board is on the, on the 12th, but the beauty of virtual meetings is you don't need a room.
I think that would work. Is, is the 12th workable for everybody?
Yep.
Yes, okay. All right. We'll go with that then. Seven o'clock on the 12th. All right. Well, thank you, guys. I think this was productive. Look forward to the next go around on it. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. Nicole, happy to, happy to work with you on this if you would like. And
I'd say thank you to everybody for being open to a, a change to that. I was like, oh, my gosh, I shouldn't do, should I send this or not? So I just appreciate you for listening.
Yeah, absolutely.
Giving it a try. It's going to be clunky. I'm not promising it's going to work or anything, but I just, I am visual, too. I need to see what the goals are.
Okay. All right. I think that's, that's it for tonight, then. All right. Thanks, everybody. All right. Be safe tomorrow. Thanks. Bye.